Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 7th, 2018. For those of you watching at home, thanks for tuning in. For those here in the audience, just to let you all know, any and all parts of this meeting may be recorded today and is being recorded today, may be used in whole or in part on local access and along with some Internet access, and it's always available on YouTube shortly after the meeting airs. So, welcome, and if you would, please stand to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is the change of hours. David?
Sure. So, this is a request that references the change of hours for their outdoor patio and where our Assistant Town Administrator handles all licensing for liquor. I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Sure, so this is previously, Laudesa had changed their premise to include a patio area, then they in November went before the Board of Appeals to change their hours to extend them outside from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The Board of Appeals made a decision in favor of that, so now they're just coming before the Board to have their liquor license updated as well.
Great. Hi, how are you?
Fine.
We are on cable. If you want to let people know a little bit about your business and what you're expanding out there, that'd be great.
So, as my restaurant's Middle Eastern food, and we get approval for alcohol, we got wine, and we get approval from ZPA to change the hour to extend it till 11:00 PM. Last time on the certificate was till 7:00 PM only. So, my request today is to amend the hour extending till 11:00 PM.
All right.
On the patio, of course.
Is that seasonal, or is that year-round?
Sorry?
Is that seasonal?
It is. The patio specifically is April 1st to December 1st.
Okay, great. Board members, have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
No concerns.
Well, we're happy you're doing well, happy you're expanding and keep growing there, so we're happy to have you in town.
Thank you very much.
Tracy, you have anything else to add?
Nope, all the paperwork is all set.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the hours.
Move to Grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, we've got a few minutes before the presentation, so we'll move on. Ratify the Cable TV Committee appointment of Jake Corbett, part-time Assistant Coordinator, and I believe we have Ben here, if he'd like to speak on it.
Sure, yeah. For a while now, we've been looking to bring on a part-time person just to help with the workload. Videography and editing can take up some time. So, we put out the job posting in November, which went till about mid-December. We had about six, seven candidates, even as far out as Austin, Texas, someone applied to this job. Narrowed that down to three candidates. All definitely were qualified for the position, and myself and the Board felt that Jake just had the most experience and would be a pretty fast turnover as far as training the other two candidates. And so, the Board voted on January 22nd to appoint him, and great, great point.
We all, of course, know Jake's been around for a while doing our meetings. Thank you. Does the Board have any questions?
How many hours a week is this?
It'll be nine and a half hours.
No, I don't have anything else. I don't have any.
Ben, does the, you guys still offer classes and whatnot to do video?
If anybody is interested in learning videography, editing, learning Photoshop, Premiere, Final Cut, we do offer tutorials, one-on-one trainings. We are in the future looking to bring in more experienced people who know specifically things of Photoshop, Premiere, anything, for classes in the future. But for now, if anyone is interested, they can get in touch with me at wpcableaccessTV@gmail.com. And if you're setting up a time, and even learning video editing, videography, even still pictures as well, we're happy to train them.
All right, and you also, if anyone's interested in hosting any type of a cable show?
Exactly, yeah.
We're always looking for new programming, and so that's the same way, get ahold of you through the school or through your email.
Yep.
And that'll be great. I'm going to ask for a vote on this, and then I'm going to ask you a few questions. I've asked you before the meeting started, but for public information, that would be great also.
Sure.
So, we'll move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, as you, as you know, I was talking earlier about the controversy about why we only have Comcast and not Verizon in town. What's the, and I know we've, that's usually at Selectmen Maravilla's request, we've sent out numerous requests to Verizon to come negotiate with the town that we'd love to bring them to West Bridgewater. But you also mentioned there are some other options that we might be able to reach out to, would it be worthwhile to send communication to others along with Verizon again, to see if they'd be interested in negotiating any type of a deal?
There are a few cable companies in Massachusetts as a whole. Before the meeting, I had recommended, I would like to see another company called RCDN, they're kind of based on Newton, Brooklyn, they have more stations in more northern Massachusetts. We would like to see Verizon come to town, but Verizon definitely has kind of been picky with which towns it wants to come into. It usually wants to go in the towns that has the most business and more people to offer its service, because it would cost a lot for Verizon to come to town to set up its lines and so forth. And I would be happy to work with the Board, and our cable board would also be happy to see if we could try to persuade Verizon or any other companies to come to West Bridgewater.
I know it's not on the agenda, but would it be out of line that I ask that we send a letter of interest to Verizon and whatever other company Ben can recommend? I know it's just a first step towards possibly securing somebody. I know I've spoken to them, the office has spoken to them, but it's been a few years. I promised my good friend Tony Gummel I'd reach out to them again, so we'll see what we can do. So, I'll entertain a motion that we reach out to other cable and Internet providers to come to town to negotiate a possible expansion of offerings in town.
So, move.
Second. I have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Sorry to put you on the spot, Ben.
Oh, no, we have a cable meeting on this Monday, so I'll bring, I'll put it on the agenda.
Excellent, very good. Thank you very much. Except for minutes for review for December 19th.
So, move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes of December 6th, January 10th, and January 24th.
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item I ask to be put on the agenda, we're just four years away from the 200th anniversary of the town of West Bridgewater. As you all know, at one point, we were all part of Bridgewater, and West Bridgewater separated just shy of 200 years. I would, I know it seems a little bit early out, but I would like to start some planning and possibly appoint a committee, which I would love to serve on, even though I will probably not be a Selectman at the 200th anniversary, I would still be happy to serve on the committee on behalf of the residents, and I would just like to come up with some type of a, or just at least invite people to send out an interest to serve on the committee, and then we can decide if it's going to be a official town committee that would run the event, or an ad hoc committee, or a freestanding committee. I also would, and I don't know the legalities of it or how it has to be done, I'd like to see the town, for the next four years, put aside $5,000 to contribute, rather be for the parades, or fireworks, or any type of the celebration. I know we'll try to incorporate the band concerts and all that that year, but that's a kind of just an idea to throw out there and open it up for discussion.
I think it's a great idea. I know Plymouth is currently planning something, I don't, they're at 400, but they're planning a huge event too, I think there's coming up next year. Yeah, I mean, so are you looking to create the committee now?
Well, I'd like to at least create the committee to initiate, again, to investigate, see if we want it to be a town committee. I've had discussions with David. David does think it should be a town-appointed organization. Of course, we can work hand-in-hand with other organizations like the PTO and the Boosters Club, the Great Iron Club and that, to do a year-long celebration, but at least to get the ball rolling. Again, I throw out the number of $5,000, it could be a lot more, it could be a lot less, it could be nothing, I don't know. I just think the town should put something aside to contribute for the anniversary, so it's not all just on fundraising, which I think will be a big part of it. But I do think the town should put together something so we can actually have a significant event. I know Bridgewater, I think, winds up spending on their 4th of July about $40,000 between details and the fireworks and whatnot. So, again, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, but I think $5,000 at least is a good number to throw around for the next four years.
I think it's great to get it started and get it moving, and get some of the ideas, and maybe some of the people out there have ideas too.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we create a committee and appoint Jerry as the chairperson.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Anyone from the audience want to add anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, ratify Conservation Agent employment agreement. David?
So, the Conservation Agent's contract is up at the end of June. In executive session last week, you gave me the parameter, last meeting you gave me the parameters, I presented them to the Conservation Agent, he agreed, and before you is the agreement that encapsulates that agreement.
John Delano's done an excellent job for us, saved the town a lot of money, and as things get more and more complex, it's great to have him on board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract?
So, move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special town meeting.
Yes, so, the Water Department has contacted me, they have four water-related articles that they would like to be able to place on a meeting. They said that it is time-sensitive, so they're requesting that we call a special town meeting. So, after consulting with both Tracy, the town moderator, the town clerk, and in the school, is that we are identifying Wednesday, March 14th, that will give us enough posting requirements and also get it done as quickly as possible, which is the request of the Water Department. So, I would be looking for basically the one motion or one, or three motions, but I would be asking that you make a motion that we call a special town meeting for March 14th at 7:00 PM, that you would open the warrant, special town meeting warrant immediately, and you would close the special town meeting warrant on February 15th at 4:00 PM.
Have a motion reflect the request?
So, move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, just as an FYI to the Board, you only have one meeting between now and then, where we can make, we have to comply with the posting requirements, so at your next meeting, you will have all the warrant articles in front of you to vote to place on the warrant.
Do you have any plan other than the water ones?
I do not.
Okay, moving back, our DPW Director is here tonight, Chris Iannatelli, and Chris, you are here to do a presentation, a complete street presentation. This is exciting. It entails a lot of completing the vision and goal of our town. So, with that being said, first of all, I congratulate you on the position. We haven't seen you in official capacity since your appointment. I know things are going great, and your department's done a great, great job this winter, so thank you and your department. But with that being said, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
We have an opportunity in the town to come up with another source of funding for street infrastructure similar to sidewalks, streets, signals, anything that Chapter 90 now pretty much funds. This is another source of funding, it's a brand-new program, it started in 2016 by Department of Transportation, and it could be upwards of another $400,000 a year to the town. So, we've asked Bill Scully, who is from Green Affiliates International, an engineering firm, to do a presentation for us to kind of explain what I would do, but I think you can do a much better job with a little PowerPoint, and then if you have any questions, we'll go from there. Okay? Phil?
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see if I can work this. So...
Shut the lights.
So, I put some slides together, and I know Tracy gave me 10 minutes. I don't know if I can do it, but I'm going to try really hard. What I'd like to do, I'm going to give you an overview of what complete streets are. It's a mass DOT program, and I'll go into some of the details on that in addition, but I wanted to give you a little background on complete streets, and then talk about what the town has to do to secure the funds. Just a little bit about us, just so, we are a consulting engineering company, we're headquartered in Westford, and we do transportation, planning, engineering, structural, mostly related to bridges and dams, and do some other engineering and support-related services. So, we are experienced with this type of program, and a lot of experience with mass DOT. So, complete streets. If you haven't heard that connotation or label, it really means a street is for everyone and everything. And the street is not just the pavement, it's the right-of-way. So, the public right-of-way is to consider, you know, all the users, the walkers, the people in the car, bikers, seniors, children, disabled, people who are just using, using that public right-of-way. The program and the emphasis on complete streets is really to create a more safe environment for everyone to use that public right-of-way. And what the complete streets does is try to encourage and provide choices and opportunities for people to do, travel between point A and B and not necessarily be in their car. So, this is just, you know, shots of some of the, of the groups that probably 15, 20, 25 years ago, we really didn't think that much about when we did our transportation work. Some of these things that I've bulleted here, you probably have heard of over the years. We've talked traffic calming, slowing traffic down, safe routes to school, neighborhood traffic management, rails to trails. You know, you've heard of a lot of these programs that really sort of started getting popular over the last 15 years, and certainly the interest in walking, biking, and health. And these days, and in really the current environment, the health departments, transportation departments, planning departments seem to have, and the engineering, have all coalesced into, you know, this idea of complete streets to provide, to meet all those kinds of needs, all different interests. So, these are just a couple of pictures of what aren't complete streets. So, this isn't indicative of West Bridgewater, but, you know, just a very wide road, moving traffic, no sidewalks, nothing safe to cross, so you see a couple of people out in the middle of the street. This is, this is very common, even in, the shot on the right is a town in central Mass. I can't remember exactly where the other two pictures are from, but very common, where you'd see sidewalks and curbing are in, and all of a sudden, someone with a stroller or wheelchair can't negotiate up the ramp, or sidewalks end. Sometimes those were built, it could have been in everyone's mind, okay, this will be a phased building, you know, maybe a developer came in and, hey, could you build a sidewalk from this point to this, and we'll pick it up later, or someone else will, and then nothing happens. And then, and as I said, the one on the right, there's no ramp, no curbing. And in these days, ADA compliance is extremely important, not only for building access, but also ground access around the streets. And this is just, if you have a bus stop, and this one shows, you know, really no one can get to the bus shelter, or from the bus shelter, it's not very easy to get down to the transit stop. These are just some shots of some of the communities around the country just doing different things. Sometimes not widening their roads at all, sometimes it's just reallocating the use of the street within what's already built. And some of it is building islands, protecting your parking, the islands allow some streetscape, the islands allow a pedestrian to be out more closer to the street, they can see cars coming, cars can see them better. Shot of Hamburg, New York, and upstate New York is just, that's on the right side, and that's just widening sidewalks, putting some trees in, street lamps, defining a spot where moving traffic can be, and really, outside of that, they shouldn't be unless they're going to park their car. This is just an example of what we call bumpouts. So, you have the sidewalks on both sides, and then you extend out into the street, and what this, this is in Cambridge, and you've probably reduced a 44-foot crossing to about 22 feet by these bumpouts. And again, where the signs are, picture a person there, and all of a sudden, they can be seen very easily by oncoming vehicles, or they can see oncoming vehicles much better than without that. And some bike activity, whether it's bike parking, bike accommodation on the streets, different communities accommodate in different ways. We're working in rural communities as well as urban areas, so it's all a little different. Sometimes people have the perception of the program is, I've got this street, how can I, I can't put bike lanes everywhere. And the program isn't, isn't that, but it wants to start to get people thinking so that you approach things a little differently. Over time, you have this philosophy saying, well, we've got this project, how can, are there any opportunities I can make things better for more than just the moving vehicle? This is just an example of Littleton. So, Littleton was one of the early ones in 2016 that developed a plan, got planning money from DOT, and then was awarded implementation money. And on the left, they built a brand-new sidewalk that, on a section of Brussels Street, that didn't have a sidewalk. It connects a residential area with a commercial area on one end and down to the school on another end. They had a series of bike racks purchased as part of the program, put at parks, their town pond, this one's in the town center, and they did a couple of other things as well. There's a lot of different actions that are eligible for funding. And this is just some traffic control or transit, whether it's speed limits, speed feedback signs, shelters, islands, different traffic calming techniques, some additional, and all of these are eligible type of items. And one on the left is the contiguous rail trail that runs through Framingham and Natick, and this was a crossing of the busy street, and so that type of signal is, it's called a hawk signal, and it, it's not a normal, you know, signal that you see out at the 106 intersection, but it is similar in that it will turn red if someone hits it, if there's enough, enough people on the trail, and the volume of the traffic is high enough, it becomes a way to stop traffic. I mean, you make traffic stop, it turns red, but it doesn't stay red for, you know, 35 seconds, so. And these are just some examples, this is actually down in Providence, so may or may not be applicable here, but again, just examples of, the picture on the right was widening the sidewalk, and by widening the sidewalk, outside the restaurant, they're able to put some tables and chairs, be able to put a bike rack, put a couple of trees, and it makes the environment. So, part of complete streets too is, is what we call placemaking, so it's making the environment comfortable where you feel like, you know, being somewhere. And in, and in a lot of the communities in Massachusetts, you do have the business districts or the villages, so those kinds of actions are eligible. The one on the left is what, it's kind of weird, but we call it a parklet. So, it's taking a parking space, and it's removing, you know, you're not going to park there anymore, and they put benches and barriers around there, and it becomes again an extended seating area on the sidewalk where people sit comfortably, and this one is outside another restaurant up there. So, you've probably gotten the feeling I have on some of these, why important? So, studies, research, practices that have been ongoing, you know, have shown that besides making movement safer for all users by reducing the crosswalk width, or widening the sidewalk, or having the handicap ramps, those are all really good, but they've also shown that there's economic benefits, there's health benefits, and by doing a lot of these things, it essentially is providing choices so that people, as I said, you have a choice of what you use to get between points A and B. So, the mass DOT program, and it's really a unique program, complete streets has pretty much crossed the country. In Massachusetts, you had Governor Patrick instituted a healthy transportation policy, that was back in '14. You had the legislature then pass legislation about the complete streets, and then you had the Health Department and DOT work together to develop this program, and DOT put it in. What's unique about DOT's program is they actually agreed to fund, they require every town, if they're going to give you money to implement something, they're going to make you have a policy and a plan. And the unique part is, they're giving you money to develop the plan, and they're giving you money to implement. So, pretty good. I mean, their goal is to really try to get this kind of thinking going across the, across the state. So, it was initiated in early 2016. At that time, they did a lot of training, probably for about four or five months, and later this year, I think they're going to come out with another round of training where they, it was, I think it was free, so I recall, and staff from the towns could attend for the training, people in the DOTs and in the consultant world. As I said, it provides assistance in the real incentives for the municipalities to do complete streets, and in the end, that's what they're looking for. They're trying to find ways that we end up having easier and better travel choices and equitable offerings to all types of users. A part of the program is, they set it up in tiers, and tier one is developing a policy. So, right now, the town of West Bridgewater doesn't have a policy, however, the way DOT structured the program was that if it was something the town wanted to pursue, you could file what's, what amounts to a letter of intent. I intend to develop a policy. They're going to give you a year to develop the policy, and in the meantime, you can go right into obtain planning grant money to develop your plan, and then begin to implement elements of your plan. And that's tier two. So, right now, they're funding up to about $38,000 per community that applies to do the plan. Tier three is the implementation, the construction or the installation. It's similar to a degree like the MassWorks program, they really want shovel-ready projects. It doesn't mean you have to have everything done by the time you apply, but it got to be well on the way if something needed to be engineered or permitted. They're not going to award tier three unless, so here's the catch then, you get the year to develop the policy, you can't apply for tier three until your policy and your plan are done and submitted into DOT. The policy isn't, isn't really difficult. It's almost, I mean, I look at it, it's like apple pie and, you know, motherhood and all that, but, but there are some things, and they've tried to make it so that it's not, doesn't create problems for the local DPWs or the town. So, as I said, it kicked off in '16. Right now, there's 186 communities registered across the state, 146 have adopted policies, 90 have approved tier-two plans, and then there's been 48 awards for implementing the plans, and that is over, I think that's, that's two rounds, I think. One or two communities actually got an award on each, each round. They were done and ready with round one, and then they, they ended up getting in and approved for round two. The state is trying to spread the, spread the wealth, so to speak, so that, you know, as time goes on, you're going to have more communities who have projects and want to go for the tier-three grant, so competition will get a little tougher, but also you'll have probably lower, lower chance of repeat until all the other, if you're going up against a community who's never gotten an award, you know, they may be the ones who get it. You don't have to go for $400,000. If you have a project that you only needed $83,000 to finish, you could go after that. We've, we've worked with about a dozen communities so far in developing the plan, and some of them needed help in developing the policy. So far, five applied for tier-three and received almost $2 million in implementation money, and it really range. I showed you the pictures of Littleton, that was a sidewalk, they included besides the bike racks, a couple new school zone signs, speed feedback radar signs. Town of Weymouth, a lot of speed Town of Weymouth, a lot of speed feedback signs and a couple of enhanced pedestrian crossings with the flashing and everything. Hudson, I think, was mostly sidewalks with their first award. So, so, so it comes down, you know, first thing, tier one is policy. And as I said, a letter of intent can be submitted to DOT once the town is registered. They can submit this letter of intent, and then that enables you to apply for a planning grant. The policy, as, as it evolves, covers these kinds of things. So DOT is looking for some of this. And some of this is based on guidelines and, and research from national organizations. So Smart Growth America does a lot of work. The National Coalition of Complete Streets does a lot of work in there. So, and Mast dot built off of that a little bit. But what they're trying to do is, they're trying to encourage towns, you know, don't just pick a project. Think of your town holistically, in a complete way, and develop a, a plan. And, and really, the plan ends up being a laundry list of, of actions. And they'd like to see actions that connect, you know, maybe, as an example, might be a neighborhood with a school. Maybe it's connecting a bike network to a transit route, you know, things like that. They're looking for connectivity, and they're looking, and they want the town to develop a plan that, in the end, they want to see a minimum of fifteen projects on the plan and five years. So five-year for, projection. All types of users, so they're looking for different statements like that. All types of users, exceptions that I've highlighted there. So some of the worry of DPWs were, oh geez, what if I'm just doing a regular maintenance project and I, and I just have X dollars of my chapter ninety? There's an exception in there. So you build these exceptions in, and there's a process internal to the town, not going back to the state, but you lay out your rules of, okay, under these circumstances, we, as a town, would entertain exceptions to the rule. It might be, I know another example they bring up is, what if, what if a water line burst, I got to go out, fix the water line, I'm digging up the road, and I have to close that road and divert traffic around. Do I have to worry about complete streets while I'm spending two months fixing this problem? And, and so you, you build that in where you don't, you know? They're really trying to, they're trying to encourage, push the idea, keep simple, and, and try really not to create problems at the local level with it. And so far, I, I mean, my own personal experience is, well, this is on tape, so I got to be careful, but I'm, I'm really happily surprised as, as I've seen how DOTs run the program. You do eventually have contact with your state aid person in the district office. The unit up in Boston, it's a different unit than, than when you go through a major TIP project and through the MPO process, and that takes you three years to get something done. It's, it has not been that way. As I said, Littleton, they got their planning grant probably in, I'm going to say, April of May. By August, we had the tier-two plan done into the state. They had their application into the state around September first for tier three, got awarded in November, and that project of the sidewalk, everything there, it was done by the following August, maybe? August, September? So that's pretty quick. So I, and I pretty much said mostly everything here. The focus is on local roads. So this program, it's not, if DOT has ownership of any of your roads, it's not designed for And I'm not going to really go through a lot of this. As you get into the plan, there's a process that you go through. And it's fairly standard, but we do look at safety, we look at, we take into account other things that are going on in the town. So you might have an open space plan or a master plan underway, or, or something else, other projects that are on the list of things, and some of that might be eligible for complete streets. We're not here to reinvent the wheel. We're, we're trying to take everything that might already be on the books, plus any new things that we see, and there's no sidewalk here, or there is a sidewalk, no handicap ramps. And you just start making that list, as I, as I said, and, and compile this into the prioritization plan. We do some field work to verify certain things. We look at, try to define then in total the needs. Some of it is gaps in the sidewalk, gaps in the connections, and then start to identify potential actions. Our typical process with, with this program has been, we work with a local group. So it might be the board that says, you define a, a working, a complete streets working group. And that's who we work with over, over about a three-month period. And in three months, we have the plan ready to submit into the state. Different towns do outreach differently. Some towns have done very minimal, and they've used their working group people. And that could be department heads, it could be, we've had one town on a volunteer committee for ADA compliance, a, a person on that volunteer committee also then participated on, on the working group. So some towns use that working group really as their sounding board and representing, you know, the, the community. Other towns, Winthrop, we did online tool where people in the town just zeroed in on that map and told us specifically, I can't cross at this corner or I'm going to get killed. Or, you know, very specific. And then we, we use that together with all the things we do and research or field work and combine them in developing the plan. A lot of different types of eligible actions. Those are the four basic categories, but a lot of actions. A full signal. You could do a full traffic signal upgrade if that signal was going to make pedestrian movement safer, accommodate bicycles in the, in the signal operation. And let's say the signal needed to be updated. And, and really, as we go through the process, as I was mentioning, okay, DOT, when you, you have, you have tier three to apply. And if you're going to go and apply, you have to have the projects pretty much ready. So when we go through and develop a plan, we're identifying, even, an action may be great, but you know, maybe to build that sidewalk, you're going to be running along wetlands, so you're going to have to deal with that issue. Or, or to do another action, maybe you have to, maybe there's a right-of-way issue. So, or something needs engineering. Some, some actions need minimal engineering, where you can pretty much write a one-page spec as the town goes out to bid for the bike racks. Okay, here's the pad you're going to put, here's, here's the details of the, of the bike racks. Some projects, like if this was on the bottom, one's existing, one's proposed, so if you were going to modify an intersection, you would need to, to have some engineering done. But as we go through that, that plan, we identify all those things. We identify preliminary costs. We identify this plant, this project needs engineering or doesn't need a lot of engineering. This is ready to go, this isn't ready to go. And, and then, and with the working group, you begin to set priorities of, it might be, what's ready? What's the most important thing in the town? Does it relate to some other plan that we have in the town? And you just start to set priorities. You can have a list of priorities. Your number-one priority may need a lot of work, so, but you're ready to apply to the state for implementation money? Well, you don't have to pick that, in your plan, that's your number-one priority, but numbers four, five, and six are ready to go. Let's, let's apply for four, five, and six and, and get them going while we work on number And, and when we're setting priorities, these are all kinds of things that we would think about, talk, talk to the group about, and try to rank those projects. And in the end, while we will prepare a brief report, in the end, this is basically the plan that gets submitted to DOT, and they do a cursory review. They're looking for, have you made a, a realistic cost estimate? Did you define the project good enough? Very minor comments that, that we've seen, but it's, it's a, it's a laundry list with, with a lot of information in there. We tell, tell them, this addresses transit, this addresses ADA compliance, this addresses We identified by GIS coordinates where all these things will take place. And this is, I mean, we'll end up with that, the, all these things, but the first, the one I just showed you is the most important thing for the tier-two. And then the second thing that we do that's real important is, we will come out of that working group session knowing where do we want to go for the tier-three application. So we'll prepare the paperwork for the tier-three application. What, what the state's been doing now, and, and I can't say it's going to stay that way, but they have an April one deadline for tier-two plan and a May first deadline for tier-three applications. And then if you don't go to them, you go to September first and October first. So two, two time periods during the year that they are accepting applications. If we, if you miss the plan deadline, then you can't apply for the tier-three until you get your plan. So at this point in time, if, if West Bridgewater was to pursue, you'd be pushing to, to meet the September first and October first deadlines. As I said, the work probably takes about three months. Approvals, right now, I, I mean, in my latest conversations with staff at DOT, there is planning money still available. We're still, we're, we're not close to the end of fiscal year. But you're in a time period where if you wanted to pursue, now's the time to get all the paperwork in. And it takes them about, takes them, I know in about a week whether you, you're getting funded, but it'll take about six weeks before they finally give the notice to proceed to the town. Just some examples of, of plans. So Littleton had fifteen projects defined totaling four-point-six million. That was again over, they could probably do theirs over five years. And not that, not that the complete streets funds would fund everything, because also on that plan, you might have a million-dollar project. You can only apply for four hundred thousand. So, you know, if you figured out, yeah, that project, and we know where the other six-hundred's coming from, we go after that other four hundred to, to supplement. Or you just do whatever four hundred covers. Weymouth, I mentioned that one. So they're in the middle of construction now for the year one. And Winthrop has just put an application in, they're waiting to hear for construction. And I think that's, that's it. Sorry, I probably, I probably did go long, but I get excited and like, like the topic. But happy to answer any questions. And Chris, I don't, if you want to say a few more.
Could you put that lights up, John, for us? Thank you.
I just want to thank Bill. I think he did a great job putting it together as quickly as he did. And it's just another source of funding for the town. We're going to apply for grant money to get all this paperwork done, so it's not, should not cost the town any money for the prioritization or the policy. And then we go to work. We've got to come up with a laundry list of things we want to do in the town and start applying for the money.
Well, we know sidewalks has been a, a major priority of the town for a number of years, not only through this board, but the, your, your department and the school department. And, you know, we keep coming up short or just, I know, you know, even a couple times we were awarded funds that were never allocated. And just, just like we can never get forward. So this actually seems like a, a great plan to do some of what the vision we already have, gives us an avenue to completion.
I agree. And it doesn't take away from the chapter ninety one.
That's great.
Like you said, um, because I don't know if we're getting a duplicate of effort here or what it is. I'm on the MassDOT committee, okay? And I see all those communities, you know, out of here. Littleton, they're not around here at all, okay? And that's the first time I ever heard of that on there. And we meet every month, okay? We have like a tip list. And we, we plan the things three years, four years from now, okay? And I would just think, in a presentation like this, should be made before the Metropolitan Committee there, so all the communities. I remember, I represent sixteen communities. It seems to be, everybody seems to be a duplicate of effort, that they're actually doing the same thing. But who's going to go, who's going to go first here? I mean, whether there's a priority is going to be, that's what I want to know before I start getting involved in another plan. There's plans all over the place. But you know, I'm an action person. I like to see action instead of delays, delays, delays. For an example there, we try to get lights there, over there on our East Street thing, you know? And this is unbelievable. You know, you used to be able to get a, a traffic light for a hundred thousand dollars. Now it's five hundred thousand dollars.
Just, just to, this gentleman doesn't work for the agency.
I know he doesn't.
He's an engineer that assists towns.
I'm not doing him hell or anything, but I'm just going to tell you.
So it's.
No, 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 it never sounds like to me that.
I think you're, you're preaching to the wrong choir, Eldon. I think that's a.
Well, I don't know if I'm preaching to the wrong choir, because I, you know, another plan or anything else, but as far as the implementation and the, and the money now, this is, now you mentioned DOT, this has been all gone through DOT, I never heard of it on where I am, you know?
Okay, so you're on the MPO.
Yeah, I'm on the MPO, that's right.
So you said a couple of good things. One is, you're a man of action. I'll tell you, this program, this, so this is a separate program. You cannot use this money for TIP projects, okay? You can't use this money right now on roads that DOT owns, even if you wanted to, because it doesn't have a sidewalk, let's say, you know? So in the way, while it says plan, I showed you that sheet. You're going to have two or three eleven-by-seventeen sheets of, you know, the paper. That's the plan. And it's basically a list of projects you're going to go after funding to put in. Like, like I said in Littleton, Littleton went from getting the grant to do the plan. In three months, we finished the plan, put in an application for the funds to implement. They needed a little bit of engineering, some things were already underway, and they, that, that helped them pick what they were going to do with the money on year one. They got an award, and so within a year, they had identified their plans, put the money in for funds, got the funds, and went out to bid, and, and the contractor was done in, in about a year. So, so it's very action-oriented. My experience has been, and Weymouth's the same thing. Natick, Hudson is getting ready to bid their, their project. So the, the idea of the complete streets plan is local. It's, it's, granted, it's not a three-million-dollar project. It's, you know, you're, you're choosing projects that, that are smaller in scale, pedestrian-oriented. And like I said, some things don't need much engineering at all, so they're ready to go. You just need the funds.
We've been like, like a buildup from, like I see this sort of, of the high schools here. Like a buildup from the high school. You know, sat there and built out from there where the kids use, you know, the most traffic of the kids. You know, narrow streets. And, and the way our, our 106 is over here, it's, it's so traffic-oriented now with the market basket and everything else, they're using all those backstreets now. And this is where the, where the kids that, that don't eligible for the bus, they have to walk.
This might, this might.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think you're, you're.
And I know, and I know we need a plan.
It can take you twenty years to get something.
I asked Dave the other day, I said, because I was getting something, even on that tip list that we have there, to, to actually have, have projects on there. And I know, I'm going to ask Chris if he'll come to some of those meetings there, because that's where it seems to be, you know, divided from there. And, no, I, no, I'm not down on your plan at all. I think it looks at the river. But I just don't want another plan that don't go nowhere.
This is supplement, this supplements, this supplements that plan, that whole project. That process is geared to federal aid projects. So if you're getting federal aid on federal aid-eligible streets. So this plan supplements that and is completely separate.
Yeah.
It gives you an avenue to supplement, it doesn't take away from any chapter ninety funds. It actually gives you more, a chance for more money in a particular year to get something done, like you said, you've been waiting to do, you know, you've been talking about.
I see this program as almost like our C P. It's money to do all those wish list things that there is no other avenue to fund. It's a great program. We just discussed a few meetings ago, to set aside a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks as a starting point. I mean, right in your presentation, it said, things that lead from point A to B, from our school to our park, or from our, you know, from our rail trail to, to, to the park to the school. There's, I think it's a great program. I, I hope we move forward with it. I hope we get funding. You know, there's two gentlemen in the room standing right there, working hand in hand. It's John Delano, our Conservation Agent, and along with Chris, work on some great, great projects that make our town a community. And these things, to me, are those wish list things that always get cut from budgets. And even when the legislators approve it, you never see the money. Like I said, we were approved for, I think, 500,000 dollars for sidewalks a couple of years back. We never saw the money because it was never funded. There was a big article in the paper, and everyone was celebrating the success, but the money never came through, and the sidewalks were never built. I don't think we've built a sidewalk in town on an existing street ever since I've been around. So this is a great program, and there's a lot of things that, again, help beautify, but also people don't, like you said, people don't think about wheelchairs, not being able to access sidewalks and entrances and bikes, and it's a great program that's really been something that's been neglected and ignored. So I'm excited about it.
Just have one question. You said it typically takes three months to put the plans together. Any way to expedite it and get it done for the April First deadline?
Now, you wouldn't get funds to do the plan, even if we applied tomorrow, which we could. By the time all the paperwork goes between state and town, it would probably be six weeks from today. So you wouldn't even get the go ahead till April First. And they won't then give you your money if you've already done the work. So, so the programs are nice, and that enables you to do some things without.
Well, I feel Eldon's frustration on plans, because we are told all the time, create plans, then there's no money or actual plan to implement them. And that's, this is the difference. This is a plan with an avenue to complete the plan. Ellen, you had a question?
This impacts the plan to renovate Howard Street this summer, or does, will that continue on the schedule that you already have established, or?
We hope so.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things that we want to do.
I had just sent down an email to everybody that was involved in Howard Street for ideas and input, and quite frankly, as we develop this in the next few weeks, we may see that there's a need to hold back just a tad on Howard Street because it is our main downtown street, and see if we can implement some of these other projects. And in answer to Eldon's frustration, I have been attending the Old Colony Planning, and the last word that was said to me as I walked out the door is, get on the tip list.
Oh, that's what, that's what I've been doing.
Yes. So we're going to work on that. We've got the tip list, we've got Chapter Ninety, we've got this, we've got the Safe Roots to School program that the school department is working on, another source of funding. So there's four right there, that we want to coordinate together, and as Bill will say, take a little bit from each and make them all work together. But this prioritization, making these 15 lit, 15 items, this laundry list of what we want to do in this town right now, is how we're going to get started with this. We're really going to see a change, I think, if we can get this up and running, so.
Well, if you can get something running, you know, like I said, and I, Dave, you know, I know that we lack things on that list, and, you know, and I know we have all these things that we want to get done, and there's got to be something, so you know, you can move it up. The perfect example there was Bridgewater, Route 18 up there. The police chief of Bridgewater came before us there, and I'm, and I'm one of the signature to the movement of that, of that committee, and I, I says, you know, how important, because, you know, and I'm thinking about the importance of our lights and this thing, the way to go, so, well, the light's there. But they had to move it up on the tip list there, there was a fatality there, they take all that into consideration and everything else. And the light now, it exists there, but it's, it's a process that, but here, you've got the funding or something like that, I can't see, there's something that we can get something, that we'll have something concrete that we want to get done.
Very good. We're going to take one more question back, and then we're going to move on. Denise?
Just a quick question. I read about Complete Streets last night, and I think a third of the funding has to go to municipalities with low median household income. Would that in any way jeopardize our eligibility for the funds?
Yes.
Whoever can answer it?
So when we develop the plan, so for all the towns, you have to look at, is there an area within the community that, that fits into that criteria? So we have to do that to make sure, if, if an area like that does exist, then the plan has to treat that as equal to every other area in town. So, and it actually may be more important to, that may become a priority where you say, hey, you know, they need the sidewalk, you know? So, so we do take into account that. At this point, I don't know where you were reading all that, but DOT, I, they don't make all their selection criteria public when they're going to award the Tier Three. So far, any town, in the first couple of rounds, any town that applied got funded. Now you're starting to see 90 plans, now you're starting to see people, you know, more communities putting in, and it's, it's become a very popular program. So maybe that will be one of their criteria. As I said, they're, they're really trying to spread it out among all the DOT districts across the state, if those towns are ready, and, and I'm sure they would take some of that into account. But the, I know the Lieutenant Governor's Office loves this program, and it's been really successful, gotten a lot of projects. It does, 48 projects are, and the four, I'm saying 48 projects. You may put in a grant application, and you're really putting it in for three or four things. So you're maybe doing three or four projects with your one grant. So some of those, 48 awards, but it could be a number of more.
No, we just recently got the last son, he wants definitely in the Senate bill. But we get money out of that, too. So these, all these things gel, gel together. And, and so, you know, what we're going to try to do is, is all get pushed in the same direction. That's, that's the thing.
No, I, I know, I know what you're saying.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Do we need any vote tonight, David?
The only question is, is that Chris is looking to form a committee.
Okay.
And so I believe that he's going to be using mostly department heads. So, Chris, my question to you is, is that do you want to try to start the committee tonight, or would you rather wait until you have the people that you're really identifying, and then we can get a vote at that point?
We have put together, what, I think there's eight, we may have already addressed and spoken to, and have agreed to be on the committee as a start.
Does it have to be an officially appointed committee?
It's a, no, it's an advisory, Complete Streets Advisory Group.
Yeah, I think that's better off. That way it's ran through your department, it's just a group of people you assemble to.
And meet as needed, not on a regular basis. And the other thing is that we do need a letter of intent sent to the state, to DOT, that we have ready to go, and it would be signed by David and sent in. That would get us up and running with the portal, and get them ready to assign an identification number to us that says now we're officially moving forward with this process.
There's no harm in the intent, in the letter of intent, really just telling them we're interested, so.
There's no harm in any of this, it's, it's, can be stopped at any time. If we get into this and we decide it, a year down the road, whoa, we just can't do this. There is no penalty, you just stop.
Good. Got Tracy's side?
I just wanted to add one point, just to clarify. My understanding, and Bill, feel free to weigh in if I characterize this wrong, is that the program is a reimbursement model program, so ideally, the, the projects that would be on this prioritization list would be things that we were considering doing and may have some funding available, and that those projects would be looked at more favorably when they're considering whether or not to fund. Just, so it's not just applying and getting the funds, you kind of have to identify some.
Well, similar to our Chapter Ninety, we borrow the money in expectation of reimbursement. You wouldn't put a shovel on the ground until we knew we were approved for the money, even though we didn't physically get the money.
And the processing of the money is very similar to the Chapter Ninety.
Yep.
The only difference is Mass Works project ready.
Right, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion to, okay, have a motion for a letter of intent? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, you're, let's see, we have communications reports from boards, commission committees, and town officials, there's none on the agenda. Correspondents from the public determine a course of action, there's none on the agenda. Public comment period. Ellen, I see our new Assistant Library Director is with you tonight, so if you don't mind, I'll put you on the spot and give you a moment to introduce. I've said this over and over again, and I'm very fortunate to have two department heads here that have really turned around departments and bringing great, great new things to town. And one is our Elder Service Director, Ms. Mather, took over a little bit over a year ago. And Ellen, at our library, two departments, done complete turnarounds, and if, I say it all the time, if you haven't been to the library or the senior center lately, then you haven't been to the senior center or the library, because you're both doing spectacular work. And so I want to thank you for that, and everything you both bring into the town, and, and our seniors, and it's been a spectacular development for both of you, so thank you. And with that being said, Ellen, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, yeah. Well, I just want to introduce my new Assistant Director, Jed Phillips, who we stole from Easton, I want you to know. Jed brings a lot of wonderful experience that the West, Town of West Bridgewater is, I think, hungry for. His specialty is technology, user services, which is the new name for, for reference, and it includes way more than the old reference does. It really includes any kind of outreach and services that adults and children and teens need, and we have the resources, and we can, you know, get the resources out to the community, not just in the building, but remotely. You guys were generous enough to give us a billboard slide, which has been really popular in our sales network, because we put, download in boring commute, download an audiobook for your trip. And, you know, we've been, we've been trying to get the word out that the library is far more than just a collection of books. It does include a collection of wonderful books, but there's a lot more to it than that. So Jed brings a lot of great experience, he understands sales network really well. He's going to a big, he's going to be presenting down in Washington DC at a really major national conference in April, so we're very lucky to have him. I don't know if you want to say anything. Jed, introduce yourself.
Well, you were pretty concise there. I'm really excited to get started. This has been my first week, so it's my third day today. You have a wonderful community, and there's a lot of potential. Eldon's done some amazing things in the short time she's been there, but that building and that staff have a lot of potential to improve even further, and I'm looking really forward in helping to mold that.
Very good. Thank you very much. One thing I find in common with, with both of you is you both say we have an incredible town, and how all the departments work so well together, from the DPW, the schools, the, you know, you two working together, it's, it's awesome. So thank you both very much, and welcome to West Bridgewater. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up during public comment period? Okay, hand it over to David.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first on the agenda is, in reference to Selectmen, Marera contacted our office this past week. He was at an OCPC meeting, which is our Local Regional Planning Council, and they have professional and technical assistance to help us with that compact community. So what we have done is, is that we are in the process of applying for that, hopefully secure some funds. As a reminder, part of our compact community is to try to tie into the sewer in Brockton. That seemingly has stalled, and so we're hoping that maybe with some of these funds and also other assistance, we can try to get that going again. The second is an update on the FY19 budget schedule. Really, it's just a quick update to inform you that all budgets were due last week. Some of them come in paper formats, some come in digital, it's, you know, we have, it takes us about a week to be able to put everything together. And at your next meeting on February 21st, you will start having your budget hearings, really just an, just an FYI to the board. If there's nothing else, then I am going to sit in front of you, and I am going to address the board as part of my State of the Town address. I asked a handful of department heads to be here, because they are part of the address.
And you want to sit up behind me? I'll wave him over to the side if you want.
All right. And again, I will apologize, but I'm going to re- verbatim in front of you. So, it is with great honor that I come to you before this evening to deliver my second State of the Town address for the town of West Bridgewater. As I said last year, this is a fantastic town encompassing caring and experienced leaders, tremendous businesses, and proud residents. Anybody who lives, learns, works, and plays here knows this to be true. Tonight's message is an overview of the financial strength of the town, the many successes accomplished over this past year, recognizing some failures, and acknowledging some challenges that lie before us. I can enthusiastically state that the town of West Bridgewater is in great financial condition. The first barometer of the financial strength of any organization is an examination of the town's assets. As you could see in Exhibit A, the town's overall value has increased dramatically over the past few years. For example, growth has almost doubled from 18 million dollars to 33 million dollars over just the past two years alone. Furthermore, while growth in West Bridgewater is on an upward trajectory, our neighboring communities are actually experiencing no growth, and in some cases, they're experiencing declining growth. These trends suggest that not only do people want to move to West Bridgewater, both residences and commercials, business owners, but when they make investments in this region, they are actually choosing West Bridgewater over our neighbors. Impressively, in just three short years, more than 75 million dollars has been invested into the town of West Bridgewater. The growth is a strong indicator that businesses and residents want to move to West Bridgewater, stay in West Bridgewater, and reinvest into West Bridgewater. I have heard many times that our commercial tax rate is an impediment to businesses coming to and/or staying in West Bridgewater. The data would disagree. When businesses decide to locate, many factors come into play. One main factor, obviously, is location, and do they have access to a first-rate highway system? As a result, I examine how West Bridgewater's commercial tax rate compares to all towns on the Route 24 corridor. Route 24, as we know, provides direct access from Boston to Fall River, but also intersects with three major intersections, Routes 93, Routes 95, and 195, and is therefore a natural magnet to businesses. Exhibit B illustrates that not only is West Bridgewater's commercial tax rate not an impediment, but it's actually very attractive. Truthfully, the tax rate is actually low and competitive in comparison to everybody else that is on that major highway. The Board of Selectmen deserve a lot of credit for taking a leadership position, imposing fiscal discipline on the town. As a result, West Bridgewater has not raised at the traditional 2.5% for the past four years. In fact, the town is actually more than 1.5 million dollars below its levy capacity, signaling great financial flexibility. Exhibit C provides verification that the town has not raised at the maximum allowable amount over the past four years. And to illustrate this, I also put our neighbors up, that you can see that they are actually doing it. So we're the only one in the region that is continuously not raising to the allowable tax base. By not maximizing the town's base, the board has done a remarkable job in minimizing tax increases to residents. I understand the few people are happy about their tax bill. I get it. I pay one myself. It's human. Exhibit D, though, indicates West Bridgewater's average tax bill is consistently, is highly consistent with our other local towns, even though that the town of West Bridgewater is a, is a distinct disadvantage because of our lower population. When you hired me almost five years ago, the town only had 11,000 dollars in stabilization, which is basically our town savings account. I'm proud to say that we now have 2.8 million dollars. Exhibit E shows the steepness of the curve, and how fast the town has been able to save its money versus spending it. A great benefit of having money in the bank is the positive effect on the town's bond rating. Exhibit F highlights how the past few years, West Bridgewater's bond rating has increased, and is now on par, and in some cases, in excess of what our neighbors are. This rating allows us to continue to borrow at exceptionally low interest rates, and it was one reason why the impact of the debt incurred by the building of the new middle school, high school, has never had the financial impact on our residents that we originally anticipated. While it is noble that we achieved the savings, we did not do it at the expense of the town's infrastructure or its people, nor do we minimize the services that our residents have come to depend on. For example, the town purchased two large commercial snowplows this year, along with a new dump body for our Public Works Department. We continue to preserve vital records in the town clerk's office and in the assessor's office. The school department received funding for new furniture and upgrades to its digital library. In the town's library, received a new ADA compliant walkway. Not only were all of these purchases done through paying cash, the town also paid off all of its remaining debt on the new roof at the Spring Street School. We only constructed that one year ago. The water department prioritized paying off its debt for water meters and hydrants, and for the fourth year in a row, the town did not borrow any money. As I stated last year, while investments in infrastructure are important, the town is not represented by new trucks or brand-new concrete, it's represented by its people. The town provided reasonable raises to all union and non-union personnel. The town was successful in negotiating. The town was successful in negotiating sick-time buyback completely out of the police union contract for all new employees, and we also reduced our long-term benefits such as longevity because we no longer tie longevity in the public works and the water department unions as a percentage of salary. It is now tied to the personnel bylaws. These reductions had to be made because of the benefit, because these benefits were no longer sustainable over the long haul. Our unions should be commended for working with me and the board on this issue. One of my proudest accomplishments in the fact, is the fact over the past four and a half years, this board has not had one grievance come before it. At one time prior to me, employee grievances were common. We've got to be doing something right as an organization, and what we're doing is we're being fair and reasonable to people at all times. I can never promise that we're not going to have grievances in the future, but I strongly believe that if we have a commitment and that we are motivated, that we treat people right, that we utilize common sense, we let the facts guide us, we continue to have positive relations with our employees going forward. Speaking of employees, I would like to take a moment and highlight some very important, specific events that have occurred over the past year because it is our great employees and their fantastic leadership that I really want to discuss. Our schools, led by Superintendent Dr. Oakley, continue to receive noteworthy praise. Recently, a national association conducted a study of 9,577 school districts, with West Bridgewater being ranked at 310. Think about that, a national study. Our school system, out of 10,000 districts, we were ranked 310. I think that's pretty impressive. Our graduation rate is 98%, our college admission rate is 90%, and 28 of our students received the prestigious John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award, which allows up to eight semesters of tuition to be waived because they excelled in their MCAS exams. The school only had 30 spots for its school choice program, but received over 130 applications, showing that our system is highly desirable. I am continuously astonished by the job that Marilyn Mather, our elder services director, continues to do. Over this past year, she added two noteworthy programs. First, she initiated a support group for those persons with rheumatoid arthritis and actually runs the program herself. Additionally, she brought in Weight Watchers as part of a nutritional support program, and it is customary to have between 100 and 125 participants on a Saturday. Now, this board will recall, we never opened on Saturdays before. Marilyn Mather did not allow that to stop her. And just so you're aware, because she doesn't have the additional staffing, she gets there at 7:15 in the morning on Saturdays to make sure that program gets administered in case there's need for support from one of our, one of our employees. Thank you to Mary Win Lee and John Delano for their tremendous work at Pratt's Landing, where we had a wonderful event over the summer for residents in collaboration with our public library. Mary and John then led the mission to clean the walking trails and widen them at Reynolds Landing on Ash Street. Part of the heritage of West Bridgewater's outdoor activities and enjoying the town's rural heritage in our natural habitat. Mary and John's hard work and volunteerism continue to the legacy of the town. The board should be so proud of Ellen Snoyenbus, her staff, and the work they continue to do at the library. Circulation is up 30% year over year, mainly due to process changes that Ellen implemented. In addition, we experienced a partial solar eclipse this past summer, but the town of West Bridgewater became a central hub. Our library secured a grant from NASA for 2,000 protective sunglasses so people could actually observe it, and no cost to the town. And all 700 people descended on our town to be able to watch it from our location, and they were able to experience a once-in-a-20-year event. Ellen's leadership and vision made all this happen. The amazing job of Annie Einatelli, town clerk, should be duly noted. She couldn't be here tonight because she's at a seminar, but she managed four elections this past year, including a highly contentious presidential race with record turnout. The town had technically four town meetings this year. Annie is individually responsible for the minutes and making sure that those meetings, those bylaws that get passed are passed on to the Attorney General's Office for approval and then codify the results. She did a remarkable job. No complaints, no issues, no problems. I would like to highlight the impressive work of Tracy Aldrich. You appointed her as Assistant Town Administrator in November, and she made sure, and I want you to think about this, that every restaurant, every bar, every liquor store, every used car lot, every garage station, and every entertainment license was handled. She had a couple of weeks to do something that she's never done before. She did all this without a staff member. She handled all of her normal daily duties above and beyond. She did a remarkable job. I am so happy to have her on the staff. I am so proud of her, and she is indeed a fabulous employee for the town and for this board. It is not only our employees who overreached. Many of our residents, especially board and committee members that this board appoints, they deserve the praise, they deserve praise. For example, a special thank you to John Cruz for his assistance installing new toilets throughout the town hall, to Art Cabral and Jim Holden for all the work they do on our septic systems and inspecting them, and to Steve McCarthy that literally saves the town tens of thousands of dollars every single year because of his personal expertise in tax abatement cases. John, Art, Jim, and Steve all do this for no money, or almost no money, because they are focused on what is best for the town, and truthfully, there are so many other people that I could highlight as well. Of all the achievements over this past year, 2017 will be remembered for one thing: we bought a golf course. Chairman Lawrence and Selectman Kinnahan, you showed great leadership as you spearheaded this choice from the beginning. Neither of you could have known that over 500 people would show up to a special town meeting and overwhelmingly support it. This decision allowed the town the ability to preserve 167 acres from development, stay consistent with the town's master plan to preserve open space, and this was all accomplished and no charge to the taxpayer. Selectman Marrera, I know you were initially against the project, but there is one thing that I've always been impressed with, is the fact that after the people spoke, you got on board, you signed the contracts, and you've been a big supporter, and that is why your tagline is "The People's Selectment." The Highway and Forestry Departments were merged, forming a new Public Works Department. This was done to create efficiencies on many levels, and although it has only been a few months, what negative changes has anyone noticed? The staff is acting as one department instead of two, and the results are the same, if not better. For example, we are currently in the middle of the snow season. How many snow plowing complaints as a board did you receive last year? How many have you received this year? The job continues to get done at an exemplary level because we have great employees doing a great job. It does not matter what the title of the department is, they get the job done. You look around the room and you see we began Phase 1 of incorporating the town's colors into the very fabric of our building. This office, your administrative offices, and the upstairs hallways were all repainted. In addition, the DPW building incorporated the town's colors by painting all of their exterior doors marooned. The town finally made the leap to a full-time principal assessor, and a new 9/11 memorial park has been funded near the public safety building. Further investments have been made in maintaining warm memorial park, a park used for graduation, Park Day, and weddings, and uses, and there are countless hours, thousands of hours, that our residents use to experience leisure time. And additionally, the board incorporated management incentives into all of your personnel contracts whereby goals achieved will define future raises. I have articulated a lot that has been accomplished. That is what you see. I now want to tell you what you don't see. The town still uses police officers to answer the majority of its dispatch calls. Our police department is actually smaller now than it was 20 years ago. Our fire department is perpetually strained with calls pertaining to EMS. Our building inspector plays part-time planner. Our conservation agent plays EPA regulator, and as town administrator, I am still expected to play HR director. The Board of Selectmen licensed twice as many businesses as you did 25 years ago if you've never increased your staff. Our growth in housing continues to put more strain on our DPW and water departments, which for all intents and purposes are the same size as they were more than a decade ago. We all agree that we want to save money. I get that. But the reality is, we have been saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year because we continue to ask a whole bunch of people to do a whole bunch of things. And I am sincere when I say this, that we are at the point that we cannot continue to ask people to do that. Sooner or later, we are going to need to hire more people. I understand that the focus will be on the increase in the cost, but rather, I would make the following argument: be thankful for the hundreds of thousands of dollars we've been saving to get the job done. I am legitimately concerned about the expansion of new development in town. Bill Lucini and his members on the ZB have done a fantastic job, but literally every week, and I'm telling you, this is literally every week, including today, I receive another email or another phone call from a developer looking to purchase land in this property to build more 40Bs and to put more housing. Bill's experience and expertise is, we're lucky to have it because he's been there for 30 years, along with Hugh Hurley at the planning board, but sooner or later, they need professional expertise. We have to seriously look at hiring a planner in the future. Stormwater regulations by the EPA are going to continue to necessitate we hire professionals that can implement and oversee these new regulations. We are fortunate that we have such a skilled conservation agent that is partly doing the job now, but the reality is, we are a wet town. There's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of development, and John is already stretched thin. Lastly, this past year, the town lost some key people. I honestly believe West Bridgewater had the best treasurer in the business with John Duggan. Our long-term fire chief of 28 years also retired, and in our office, we lost Mallory to another position in a neighboring town. These were key losses, and their expertise, knowledge, and experience have to be accounted for. I will admit that we have hired some very smart and able people in their places, but there is a learning curve. Please keep in mind, in four and a half years, you only have two department heads that are currently working for you that are still here. That's how much turnover we've had during that period of time. And yet, we could, you know, it requires a lot of energy on our part and it's been an ongoing challenge. Over the past year, I've made every attempt to implement the wishes of the board. The board provided me three goals to achieve: Selectman Marrera with the refurbishing of the plaques, Selectman Kinnahan to provide a presentation on merging the Highway and Forestry Departments, and Chairman Lawrence to provide a presentation on how we would incorporate a town-wide employee recognition and retirement event. I've accomplished those goals. My goal was to make sure that we could try to incorporate the town logo and present another presentation to the board, which I accomplished as well. Additionally, the board tasked me to find the following: purchase a golf course without costing the town any money. Done. The board wanted to merge Forestry and Highway, not spend more money and do it in a way that minimized the impact. Accomplished. The board wanted performance management metrics and employee contracts and begin the process of negotiating longevity payments based on the town's bylaws as a percentage of salary. Done. The board wanted more money in the bank, reduce our debt, and still not raise it 2.5%. Accomplished. And lastly, you wanted a budget that continued to transfer money to reduce the debt on the new school, and I've accomplished that as well. I've continued an internship program with Bridgewater State, helped to negotiate $2.2 million pilot for solar panels, and incorporated monthly management meetings where we recognize a department head now that goes above and beyond with what we call the Big Cheese Award. You have a recipient here in your room. As you know, last year, I incorporated educational videos for your meetings to try to keep, do my best to keep people in town knowledgeable about the affairs in the town. I feel like this was a pretty successful year, and on behalf of you, this board and I, we accomplished quite a bit. However, while there are many positives, I would be remiss if I did not inform you of failures as well. I am bothered by the fact that the town does not want to embrace a branding campaign. I have continuously received negative feedback on this issue, feedback that I've not been able to overcome. As I stated last year, I continue to be saddened by the amount of negativity that is always a buzz on social media. To be clear, I am not dismayed at residents voicing their frustration or criticizing local leaders and officials. That is, the beauty and strength of our country is to have citizenry engagement. As a local leader, I actually welcome the criticism, as long as it is based on fact, because candidly, I'm not perfect. I don't have all the answers. No one person does. Debate is healthy, and we all do a better job when we can understand another's perspective. But this is what I am going to ask this year, that when something bad happens, collect the facts, post it, no problem. But in return, how do we get the positives that we just discussed tonight that we do during the entire year? How do we get those on social media as well? As I highlighted, there are many positives, so let's post them. When it is time to be critical, be critical. When it is time to be positive, be positive. I'm still very frustrated that I made a mistake pertaining to taxes at Riverbend in my presentation. Although the error was easy to understand why it occurred, and I did make a public apology at your very next meeting, that error still haunts me. I wish somehow I could have negotiated a reasonable settlement with the former water superintendent, ending the ongoing legal battle. Although I disagree with him on the merits of the calculation and dispute, the truth is, is that he was a long-term valuable employee of the town who did a remarkably good job as superintendent. As I referenced earlier, the board's meeting room has been updated to match the town colors, but if you recall, we all took pictures, and we still haven't gotten them up on the board, on the walls and framed. I need to get that done. Lastly, I will admit that I've not always been as effective as I wanted to be this past year. This was by far the most stressful, emotionally difficult year of my life, and I experienced a life-changing event that I didn't foresee and I'm positive I didn't deserve. Each of you are very supportive, understanding, and compassionate, and I want to say a heartfelt thank you to all three of you for that. Yet even while some of these failures, some of them my own doing, I will tell you that the future is bright. While neighboring towns seek tax overrides just to pay their operational costs and officials lodge public insults at each other, those issues do not exist here in West Bridgewater. While I genuinely believe that I, along with many others, some of them mentioned, some of them I didn't mention, have achieved a lot, it is truly this board, the Board of Selectmen, that deserves the bulk of the credit. No one person acting alone could ever accomplish all the many items that were accomplished or need to be accomplished in the future. As a board, the three of you have provided the framework and the leadership to make sure that these accomplishments were possible, and as you know, every major decision only happens after consultation with you. We have great department heads, staff, and volunteers, many of which are appointed by you. If they are great at what they do, then you deserve the credit for appointing them and making sure that the town has the correct people in place. Provide them the necessary funding for training and allow them to do their job. It is with great clarity that I want to make that point, that although you are involved and provide input and guidance, you allow your employees to do their job without micromanagement. That is a key balance, and the three of you strike that chord very well. That's why it's easy for me to say that the future is very bright for the town of West Bridgewater. I sincerely believe that families will continue to want to move here, choice students will continue to want to come here, seniors from out of town will use our COA services, and developers will continue to call looking to locate here. This isn't by accident, it doesn't just happen. While there will always be challenges, the board should be proud to have this board in its leadership position, who will provide the supervision and the direction, and who in turn have appointed the many key people throughout the town to continue to make West Bridgewater better year after year after year. As I said last year, we created this tagline, I will say it again, it is a great place to live, learn, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. All right, I will entertain a motion adjourned. We will be, I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry, to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of conducting negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town administrator, and to discuss with respect to the litigation specific to Kruger versus West Bridgewater and Smith versus West Bridgewater, since in my opinion as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town of West Bridgewater. This requires a roll call vote.
Marrera, yes.
Kinnahan, yes.
Lawrence, yes. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Good night.